Call the Germantown School District or School Board meeting to order January 22 at 7:00 PM. Item one, official meeting notification. Mr. Reuter?
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Item one B, we will take roll call and then conduct a pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Ewok?
Here.
Myself Barney is here. Loth?
Here.
Pollak?
Here.
Higginbotham?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
And Medved is absent, excused.
I'll rise if you're able for a pledge allegiance in a moment.
Thank you. Item two, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Time with the motion approved. Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item three, reports. Item three, a district administrator update. Dr. Chris Quinter.
Thank you. This evening is, actually today was a teacher work day for staff as they concluded the first semester, as our students did on Friday. And tomorrow we begin second semester, so that is eighteen weeks of school remain in the school year. Hopefully, the weather cooperates moving forward. I'd like to honor two students who have graduated at semester as GHS students. The first being Ricardo Pavon and the second Connor Barney, son of Tom Barney. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
This last, over the last two weeks, Mr. Noack and myself have conducted focus groups with teachers from across the district in multiple disciplines as continuation of our compensation study. And we will be bringing our findings and themes from that compensations, those focus groups through personnel next month in February and then a full report to the board. And some great news. February starts Career and Technical Education Month, and State Superintendent Dr. Jill Underlay and her team have reached out from DPI and they'd like to do an onsite visit the morning of February 5 to watch our programming in action and honor our school for the great program, programming it has. So we're excited to host and highlight our great teaching staff in those departments as well as the great work our kids are doing. So just wanted to make that public as we enter Career and Technical Education Month in February. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Item three B, student representative report.
Good evening. New year, same fantastic adventures over at Amy Bell. January is buzzing with excitement as the students embark on a journey of learning and enjoyment. Winter map assessments and classroom evaluations are on the horizon to track academic progress. This month's character trait is perseverance, a quality we emphasize daily in the classroom. Students will explore ways to apply perseverance, not just academically, but also at home in extracurricular activities in various aspects of their life. But it's not all about hard work. Fun awaits the students, from popcorn Fridays to amazing animal presentations to school-wide assemblies and field trips. There's fun for everyone. And let's not forget about their annual Super Bowl challenge, where students and staff can place bids by bringing in boxes of bags of soup and vote for their Super Bowl winner. Excitement is in the air at Amy Bell and let the fun and learning contend. The comments are excited about the snow at recess. This month, they are focusing on their character trait of perseverance. Teaching them the importance of perseverance at a young age sets the foundation for future success. Popcorn days are adding an extra dash of enjoyment this month. And the grand finality is the PTA movie night. The students can't wait to snuggle up and enjoy a movie and create lasting memories with their friends. Happy New Years from MacArthur. Last week, they joyfully celebrated student growth and achievement with the Snowflake Scavenger Hunt. This creative initiative aimed to recognize success by rewarding classes that followed expectations and found all the hidden snowflakes around the school. The friendly competition added delightful atmosphere to the building. Ensuring that continued learning, students from kindergarten through fifth grade will undergo their second round of map testing this month. To add to the festivities, the school will also be celebrating General MacArthur's birthday on Friday thanks to the support of the PTA. At Rockfield, the new year is all about embracing perseverance. They're guiding to students to understand the significance of development, developing tools to navigate challenges, encouraging growth in moments rather than giving up. Throughout the month, students will learn various strategies to overcome difficulties. These strategies encompass deep breathing, movement breaks, flexible thinking, and goal setting. Happy New Year from the Crusaders. The Crusaders jump back into the swing of things to start off 2024. Today marks the start of second semester, so the teachers and students are eager to see what their new classes will bring. KMS students are gearing up for the American Heart Challenge on January 18th and 19th during their PE class as part of the service learning program. The learning vibes are strong at KMS, extending into after-school activities. Boys basketball and wrestling are in first full swing, with the key club collecting over fifteen boxes for donations to Friends Incorporated. The science club convenes every Wednesday, and the KMS ski and snowboard team is eager to hit the slopes with over a hundred and forty members. Excitement fills the halls at GHS as students and staff gear up for their new semester. With the semester exams wrapping up last Friday, everyone is eager to dive into their new classes and make the most of this upcoming year. The winter sports season is in full swing, keeping our student athletes engaged in our school spirit soaring. Last Wednesday night, high schoolers involved in athletics and activities organized a co-curricular fair for the incoming freshmen. Witnessing the next class explore their future options was thrilling. But we, as, before we look ahead, GHS is determined to finish this year on a high note. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a lot. We appreciate the report and the effort that goes into it. It's great to hear from the student body and what's going on around the district, so thank you very much. Three C, Amy Bell Elementary School presentation. Ms. Cole?
Hello, good evening. So I brought three of my teachers here tonight to talk to you a little bit about their student learning objectives. I'll just give you a little bit of background and then I'm going to turn over to them so they can talk to you a little bit about specifically what they're doing in their classrooms. So you can see, part of our educator effectiveness is that teachers are creating student learning objectives. They're measurable goals that are created for student learning. We take our map assessment. We just finished taking the mid-year map assessment. So a lot of the learning objectives were based on fall map data along with classroom assessments. Those teachers collected the data and were able to identify a target group of students, a portion of their class, or it could even be their whole class, that they wanted to focus specifically on, and then created a plan that aligns with the standards and the curriculum. And then along the way, we're monitoring student progress. So our set of map results that are just finalizing was a way for them to take a look and see the progress that they were monitoring, how that came out on a standard measure. So I'm going to start. I'm going to hand it over. And we have third grade first. So I have Ally Wondry and Tammy Kiesling. They're the third grade team this year. We have two sections, so they're going to talk about what they did to create their learning objectives and specifically about some of the data that they have from their classroom.
Thank you so much for having us. We're excited to come here tonight to share with the board the progress that the third grade has been able to make during the first semester in reading. The third grade team is currently piloting the Wonders Reading Program. There is an oral reading fluency component for both whole class and small group instruction. As part of the pilot, we administered the beginning of the year oral reading fluency placement and diagnostic tests to all third graders in mid-September. This showed us their words correct per minute, which is abbreviated WCPM. So you'll see that on a slide in a little bit.
Oral reading fluency is important because fluent readers don't have to concentrate on decoding. Instead, they can focus their attention on text meaning. Oral reading fluency has consistently been found to have a higher correlation with reading comprehension. Using the norms that Wonders provides, the average or the fiftieth percentile for the words correct per minute at the beginning of third grade is eighty-three for a third grade level text. The test results revealed that twenty-three of our students scored below the average for oral reading fluency. After discovering that sixty-two percent of the third grades scored below the average, Tammy and I decided that this was an area that we must focus on to help our third graders become better readers. And because of this data, we created this SLO statement. By the end of the year, students in the target group will increase their fluency to meet the beginning of the year norm, which is that eighty-three words correct per minute. Students have been meeting on a weekly basis in a small group setting. Part of their small group instruction focuses on fluency. Instruction has been given on accuracy and expression through explanation, modeling, practicing, and applying. Students have been given differentiated genre passages in the small group. Students frequently and independently practice to increase rate, accuracy, and expression. We have assessed the target group four times since the initial assessment to track the students' progress.
Tammy and I are very pleased with the outcomes so far this past semester. Our targeted students have improved their fluency rates since September. Most students have significant increases with their rate, and the average increase was sixteen words per minute. We're also encouraged that thirty-nine percent of our targeted students have met or exceeded the end-of-the-year goal within the first semester. We are very fortunate that we have small class sizes. Tammy has eighteen students and I have nineteen students, so we have more opportunities to have individual conferences with our students. During these individual conferences, we provide the students with powerful feedback on their accuracy, rate, and expression. The students are very proud of their progress and are motivated to further improve their, their rate and their fluency for the second semester. Thanks so much for letting us share our students' accomplishments with you.
Thank you.
I'm going to introduce Chelsea Level. Next, she's teaching fourth grade. Fourth grade teachers, their whole team focused their SLO on key ideas and details. They found that was a, an area that needed improvement based on their fall map. So they created their target group from students in the low, low-average category for that specific instructional area. You can, on map, you can delve into instructional areas, and that was one that they found students needed work on. So I will turn it over to Chelsea, and she can talk a little bit about how she worked on that with her class.
Thank you. Like Katie said, I really looked at my map data from my students in fall, and by looking at the areas where they needed the most extra help, I created my target group, which is four students that scored significantly lower on the key details, or key ideas and details category. So thankfully, due to my lower class size, I was able to meet with this group two to three times a week for twenty minutes a session each. So right here, this is an example of what a lesson would look like. It takes a week, so there are, the focus of this particular lesson that you're looking at is focusing on repeating words to help students determine what the main topic is. At the start of the lesson, we talk about the strategy that we're going to be working on, do a warm-up activity together. And then after the warm-ups, students have the opportunity to independently practice what we just talked about, and during this time, that also allows me a chance to informally assess them to see how they are applying that strategy on their own. This next slide is actually examples of one of my students' work. The left-hand side is the warm-ups. So in warm-up one, that is one that we do completely together. And then in warm-up two, it's the same task, they just do it independently. So in one and two, there's a short paragraph, and they're asked to pick out one to three words that they're noticed are repeating a lot. So in the first warm-up, they're talking about dogs, smell, and scent. So the main topic of that paragraph is dogs. And then warm-up three and four, this would be the next day that I'm with them, where they're still reading a paragraph, but then instead of picking out those repeating words, they are using that strategy to then just tell me the main topic of that paragraph. The right-hand side then is what we would do next, where they get a passage, and there's little checkpoints on the left-hand side that they're asked to do after they read a certain paragraph to again point out what are those repeating words. So in this one, clearly, it's about mosquitoes. And then at the final end, they're supposed to create a title that would go with that passage that relates to the main topic. You can go ahead to the next slide, thank you. So what I did is that I then was able to really dig into my fall and winter scores. At the top is their overall map score. So this is including the key details, including vocabulary and all the different components of map. But the bottom, I was able to take it one step further. And as you can see, my students did a tremendous job in this category, with one of my students bumping up their score twenty-four points, which is a fifteen-point-one percent increase. So they've been working really hard at this. They're also very proud, and I am extremely proud of them. This particular group, I am going to continue doing this with them, even though they did score so well and they clearly showed growth. I just want to make sure that they're maintaining these skills and not just doing it for a little bit and then working on something else. So I'm, like I said, I'm extremely proud of them for what they have done. And I cannot stress the importance enough of smaller class sizes because this allows me the opportunity to meet with them more often and for a longer amount of time, to really give them that one-on-one attention that they deserve to help them become better lifelong readers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for any of them?
Doesn't look like it. I just want to say thank you for coming and giving this presentation. Typically, when we see a building presentation, we get the kids in here. It was fantastic to hear from the staff and kind of highlight the work that goes beyond standing in front of the students. Working with Jake and the curriculum learning, marrying these two discussions and what we had earlier this evening, it really helps to under, the board to understand and the community to understand the totality of the work that's going on. So thank you for bringing your team in, and thank you for coming. Three D, GSD Annual Assessment Report. Mr. Mizziak, Ms. Leeson?
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to present the annual assessment report as we did last January. The purpose of the annual report is to provide a snapshot of the student performance and indicators of student achievement and growth. So each section of the report includes student performance on assessments and key information related to the interpretation of those data. And tonight, in the assessment, we will highlight some key components of the report. So the first thing to note is our overall state report card. And on the screen, you can see projected the annual performance for Germantown over the last four years. Again, one of the concerns that has been in the community at large, and it's kind of been a national discussion, is the impact of the altered education that took place during COVID and then shortly thereafter. And you can see that as a district, we're continuing to grow and we've increased in terms of our overall district score. The overall district score contains four separate components. Achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on-track to graduation. At each one of the levels, those components vary slightly. Achievement and growth and target group outcomes remain the same. All of our buildings were on-track to graduation and scored slightly different at elementary, middle, and high school. In terms of the weight that the state provides to those categories, the biggest difference would be in the area of growth. Growth is impacted by the proportion of students who meet criteria around socioeconomic status. So as that proportion of students increases, the proportion of the pie that our state report card scores for growth then increases as well. So MacArthur has our highest proportion of students from that category of socioeconomic status. So the, the growth portion of their pie is the largest. So these are the four areas that are represented on the state report card for all of our buildings as well as the district. This year, if you were to do a comparison for achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on-track to graduation, those four areas, we saw increases from last year to this year.
Okay, this table shows the ACT score for the past five years. One thing to note is last year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, it was the first year that our eleventh grade students took the ACT online versus paper and pencil. And you will notice that there was no dip in score, so we're excited about that. We are consistently above the state average in all areas for the ACT. And you'll see that we even increased in some areas from the prior school year. This graph, these charts show our pre-ACT secure. So pre-ACT is taken by our ninth and tenth grade students. It used to be called ACT aspire. Last year was the first year of the pre-ACT, and the state switched it so it was more closely aligned with the ACT. The experience is very similar for students and actually staff proctors. And you'll notice that our students scored above the state average in all areas as well. The ninth and tenth graders do take the exact same assessment. So we do expect that the score for our ninth graders to be lower because they have one less year of instruction when they're taking this assessment. This next chart shows our advanced placement scores. Any student scoring three or higher is considered passing. Last year, we had eighty-five percent of our students pass our advanced placement tests. And we also saw an increase in the number of students taking advanced placements tests for that school year.
And each one of the individual score cards that you see for, or state report cards that you see for our buildings, they have this table that's included for each one of the buildings. And then this is the district-wide summary for the forward assessment. So you can see overall as a district in both ELA and math that there's a common trend in terms of the number of students that we have that are scoring in the advanced range. Colorblind, so I'm not going to tell you the color on the bottom of that chart, but whatever color that is, a shade of blue maybe? Blue? It's blue above it too?
Purple.
Purple? So the blue and then the purple, that represents our students who are proficient in advanced. So as a district, when we're looking at trends within buildings or we're looking district-wide, that's the trend that we want to see. We want to see that that bottom portion of the graph that represents advanced is continuing to grow as well as the piece right above it, which represent proficient. The other component that we can look at is the, obviously, you're going to see decreases in other areas. So our students who are below basic, which is represented by the top color, we're looking for that to reduce over time as well. When we get our scoring from the state of Wisconsin, those areas are, you get different weights for each one of those. So you get zero points for the students who are in the basic column. You get a half point for students who are basic, a point for students who are proficient, and then a point and a half for students who are advanced. And that factors into the overall scoring that our district receives for the state report card.
Okay, the next area that we're going to share with you is our NWEA map assessment. So our, our teachers talked about how they've been using map data to analyze student growth and achievement. So map is given three times throughout the school year, in the fall, winter, and spring. And this is the first year that we've rolled it out to K-2 students as well. Last spring, we piloted the map assessment with K-2, and we decided to move forward with administering it to now K-8 across the district. Our kindergarten students only take it twice a year, starting in the winter, so they had their first map assessment this month. This graph shows the past three years of data collected through our map assessment. Now, just be, we just rolled out the, the K-2. So this chart shows us first through eighth grade, but the next chart I'm going to talk about only shows us fourth through eighth, and I'll talk about that in a second. This is projected proficiency for reading. And what projected proficiency means is predicting if our students will be proficient on the forward assessment, which is taken in the spring. So you'll notice we have three years of data divided by different schools, so each color is a different school. And you'll notice that in reading, we see our students are about, about forty percent of our students across the board are projected to be proficient in reading on the forward assessment. Now Jake and I did some analyzing of this and comparisons, and we found that this tends to be a conservative estimate based on what we actually see in forward. And we actually get a higher percentage of students who are advanced and proficient on the forward assessment in the spring instead. And this is the same graph, and this is for math. So again, projected proficiency on the forward assessment in the spring. The math is more closely aligned to the scores that we see on the forward assessment, usually within a couple of percentage points. The next two charts are achievement and growth for our math assessment. So this is where we're only looking at students in grades four through five and then six through eight for Kennedy. The reason why we're only looking at those grade levels is because this report looks at students' growth over the course of one year. So for example, we'll take the fall score for 2022, and then we'll take the fall score for 2023 for the same student. And it will tell us if they met or exceeded their growth goal that was projected. And using this data, what we do is then I, we compile the percentage of students who met or exceeded that growth goal. So you'll notice there are three years' worth of data. And in three of our five schools, we had over seventy percent of our students meet or exceed their growth goal, which is great. And then this is for reading. So the first one is math. And then you'll also notice that there was a significant increase in the past two years of students achieving or exceeding their growth goal in reading.
And at this time, Julie and I would take any questions that you might have regarding the assessment report.
Mr. Barney?
Just looking at this last chart and seeing the jump from, you know, I'll just pick up county line, from thirty-three in 2021 up to fifty-three and then to sixty-three point eight. Do you have anything to tell us why that may have happened? You know, what the jump was? Is there change in curriculum? Did we do something different in the classroom?
Julie had pointed out, one of the significant differences last year is we did focus a little bit more on the map assessment and that data. The 2021 school year, you could make an argument that the education that students had received the previous year may have resulted in a little bit of a disjointed education, and what you might be seeing there is the recovery piece. As this is three years' worth of trend data, it's nice to forecast that, and we will continue to gain more and more data so that we can look at this more longitudinally, especially when we look at our younger students, so that we can see those cohorts of students over time. So with that information, we could, we could start pointing to certain things. So if we went to next year, when we're taking a look at the implementation of a new reading curriculum, we can point to that as information for, are we seeing the growth that we anticipated for this? Is there an implementation dip that we're noticing where there's, our, our growth data doesn't seem to mirror what we anticipated? At this point in time, there wasn't a significant adjustment in terms of the curriculum that teachers were using. There have been work at each one of the buildings in terms of their engagement with things like the science of reading, where they've, they've focused more heavily on some of the core components of that. So that could potentially explain the, some of the shifts that you see. But you're, you also might be seeing the rebound from that disjointed education that they may have received from the COVID year.
Yep. God, thank you.
Do we have any information from the 2019, 20? Because that would give us, you know, is that because there was, you know, the learning from home, online learning? Because is there that jump, or was it before, was, you know, were we in the sixties at Amy Bell? And you know what I'm saying? Was there an actual drop? We just don't have that information to know.
We don't have that data. We have some of our data from the forward exam, so you can, it's not, again, it's, this is projected proficiency, so you can take a look at how we were scoring on the forward exam to see that there, there was a dip that had taken place from the pre-COVID to, you know, the, the years following. But then, within all of our schools, you're seeing that recovery of more students on forward being proficient in advance.
Because what's interesting is you didn't see that decline in math. Math pretty much stays, you know, consistent throughout. Math pretty much stays, you know, consistent throughout. So I guess it, yeah, I found that.
The, so one of the other things to consider with, with growth is it's students hitting their growth target. So that's taking each student individually wherever they're at right now. So if they experience some learning loss, it would take that start value and then project forward the expected growth for that student. So growth versus achievement might look a little bit different in terms of those graphs. So the achievement part, you can look at in terms of forward. For growth, we have to take that individual student data to see how much they've grown. And it's relatively tough to do when you're using forward data, given the forward scale changes with each grade level. So the scoring isn't one-to-one. There isn't like a useful comparison for students other than were they low, basic, basic, proficient, or advanced because of the score shifts that happen from grade level to grade level. So measuring growth in individual students using forward is not something that I would recommend.
Additionally, NWEA did a research study post-COVID, the year after, to measure learning loss based on their national norms. There's a higher rate in the United States of learning loss in reading than in math. So when you look at this math chart, you see it leveling off more because the rate of loss wasn't as great as in reading because of many factors, the type of instruction that was occurring, engaging in, and, you know, rigorous work, those types of things. So the NW will even say nationwide, the regression in reading outweighed the regression in math during the shutdown in that period of time.
Taking a look at the reading scores from twenty, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-one, twenty-two across our elementary schools, three of them are pretty much in line with each other, with a recovery of twenty points. One of the school has recovery doubled. It'd be interesting to see what happens specifically there or if that low number in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one is just an outlier or bad data. I mean, anytime we have three schools within the same standard deviation and an outlier, and it looks to be a very good success story, that's kind of stuff we want to be focusing on and replicating if there was something that attributed to that.
Well, just in, in trying to kind of understand this, if I'm understanding this correctly. So when you do the projected proficiency, so say for, you know, for Amy Bell for twenty-three, it says forty-one. Is that we think forty-one percent are going to hit projected proficient?
Proficient or advanced.
Okay, so then, but then we look at the achievement growth, and it's sixty-one. Does that mean sixty-one percent of the forty-one hit there? Or does it mean we've actually done better than what we projected? Sixty-one percent are now proficient?
So for growth, a student could hit their growth target. But maybe they started out in the below-basic band of the forward, and then they jumped up to the basic band. So they made, they could have made a lot of growth to go from below-basic to basic. So they would hit their growth target by MAP standard. So MAP, you can say they're measuring their growth. How much did they grow versus proficiency is just an achievement level? So did they make that achievement level? So you might see a student not really grow at all, but they were proficient in third grade, and then they were proficient again the, the next year. They may have even kind of reduced within that band. So what growth measures takes into consideration where the student is coming in. So you could see a lot of movement within each one of those areas. So they're, they're measuring two separate things. So how much did the student grow within that year? And then whether or not they reached that proficiency level. And like Julia said, what we're noticing with map across all of our buildings is reading tends to be a little bit more conservative in terms of its projections, in terms of how many students are proficient in advanced. So if you were to take any one of these schools and then compare it to their state report card, the, the projected proficiency that you see, for example, at Amy Bell, is underneath what they actually achieved in terms of the number of students who are proficient or advanced on the forward. For math, it's a little bit, it's pretty close in terms of what map is predicting.
So let me take a look at some of the, like the forward data. And anytime we see growth in, in the lower end there, the low portion of the graph, meaning the blue and the purple, then that's higher achievement. And anytime we see shrinking in that yellow and the orange, specifically in the not test, meaning someone didn't take the test, it looks like we have more people potentially involved in it and taking the test. That's all, that's good, right? And, and the other numbers that we're talking about. But I think it's important to remember that we, we layer all this data over itself. Because we could say, look at all this great work we did in forward. And if we went back and found out all we did was teach the test, then, then we probably failed our students, but we have great forward scores. So that's why I think all of the data that's involved here and the layering of it and the understanding, I personally don't think we teach the test. So when I see this growth, it's organic, it's, right? It's from the process that's developing, which is a good thing. I do like to see the numbers that we are seeing. Obviously, we always want to see, see and push more. But I think it's indicative of the process that's going on throughout the district and the intent that's being placed honestly throughout the district in improving across the board. So it's, it's great data to see. It's encouraging to see. It's a portion of what we use to analyze what we have going on. The layering of it definitely helps understand it a little bit better.
And that, the test participation is something to note. So Julie and I worked with principals and then teachers last year to increase the number of students who were taking the forward exam. We had noticed that we disproportionately had a higher number of students who were in special education, who are opting out of taking the forward exam. And then we've, we've doubled down on the importance of why this data is important for not only our district, but for our teachers to help understand student growth. So the number of students that you see there that did not test, that has gone down significantly. That's more students who have IEPs who are now taking the forward exam because that was the largest proportion of our non-testers was a student from that particular group.
Anything else for us? Anybody else? Well, I appreciate the information, the report. As usual, it's fantastic, in-depth, and continue to grow in that aspect. Do you have more to continue with that, or are you finished? Okay, thank you. Item four, Citizen Commons. I have two. We'll start with Heather Peake, who she has an informational announcement for us.
Hello, everyone. I'm just here to do a quick plug for our upcoming winter play Murder on the Orient Express. If you haven't heard of it, it's a murder mystery. We have about forty high school students involved with it. They're working really hard, and it is going to be right here at the PAC. Not this weekend, but the weekend after. We have a show Fri-, uh, sorry, excuse me, Saturday, February third at two PM, one at seven PM, and Sunday at two PM on the fourth. So if you're interested in seeing it, invite your friends and like it on Facebook and share it. And get your tickets online from the PAC website.
Thank you. I have one more, Ellen Coulter.
Hi. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I didn't actually have anything really written out. But in regards to the open enrollment spots and the thirty additional five K seats, a couple of points I wanted to make is I was just wondering if you guys had considered the additional developments that are happening all around Germantown and whether or not, how many children might be enrolling from those additional housing projects that are, that are coming up all over Germantown that I'm seeing? So that was my first point. And secondly, and more important to me, I guess, is the special ed comment here. It says, in the packet, it says that the specialized services are already at capacity. So students with special needs will not be accepted. I just wanted to point out that I have three kids in Germantown, and I had two kids that were on IEPs. My daughter was put on an IEP after kindergarten because she needed additional speech services. And she was on that IEP all the way through elementary school. My son was put in an IEP in second grade after he had got diagnosed with ADHD. He got diagnosed with anxiety. And I'm actually happy to announce that he's in eighth grade. And just earlier today, he was removed from that IEP, from our amazing special ed teachers here in Germantown. So some of those diagnoses aren't actually known before entering school. And that would be two-thirds of my children. So sixty-six percent of my family had been in the IEP after the five K grade. So those are just some things I wanted to point out and make sure that you guys were considering. But as always, thank you so much for everything you do. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, Consent Agenda. item A, approval of December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
Second.
Ms. Sigamathan with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion? See and done? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda B, Approval of Teacher Resignations.
Tonight, we have Laura Supernan submitted her letter of resignation on January fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Laura was hired in August of two thousand twelve as a science teacher at Germantown High School.
Thank you. As far as any particular reasoning why or attempt for retention that you could give us some insight on?
Yes, we spent considerable time talking about this situation and the departure of this teacher. This is a teacher who, in her over twelve years of time, and especially in the most recent years, has evolved into being a department leader. She holds a dual certification, as well as she's involved in many extracurricular activities and is well-liked by students. So we're very concerned about this. We collectively discussed an offer, a considerable increase to salary, in an attempt to retain.
Okay. And I apologize, we didn't have our personnel committee meeting. So I'm going to take a little time here on this topic. For many of the reasons I think you just cited, we're kind of sad to see this, this direction. This teacher taking, choosing resignation. It sounds like she's joining another district. Sounds like, for the conversation, there was a great deal of attempts for retention. And we just weren't able to get it done on that side of it. I do appreciate, I know we've talked about in that committee creative solutions to this. And I think this is, the approach to the retention attempt in this was considerably different than prior. So I think there's a notice to be served on that end of proactive. It's reactive to the situation, however proactive in, in the, the style and attempt for retention. But do we, as far as replace?
Yes.
Direct replacement? Do we have replacement, anything like that?
We are very close to securing a teacher. This particular packet is completed middle of the week and late in the week. And Friday, we have secured a teacher. We just need to go through some background checking and physicals and those kinds of things to secure the teacher. This is a first-year teacher who's completed student teaching. It's an excellent opportunity for, and we're excited about the opportunity. At the same time, as we've said, it's difficult to see an experienced teacher leave.
Absolutely. I appreciate the update on that. And it's the swiftness we were able to bring somebody in. Obviously, we're going to lose the experienced side there. And you'll have time to address that end of it as we continue forward. But knowing we have somebody coming in, in that timeframe is better than we have.
Yes.
So it's an improvement in that. So I appreciate your hard work on that. Does anybody else have anything on this topic? Nope. With that, I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the resignation of Laura Supernan and thank her for her service to the students, their families, and the Germantown School District.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pock with the second. Any discussion? See and done? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Approval of teacher contracts. Item C.
Thank you. We have one contract coming forward tonight. As was just referenced, this was based on resignation that occurred at least a couple of months back. This is for Amanda Hunt, an English language, an English learner's teacher. So serve multiple schools in the district. This is a one-point-oh limited-term contract for ninety-nine days at thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. This teacher comes to us with strong experience in neighboring district as well as at WCTC. We're very excited about what she has to offer, and she's extremely excited about being here.
Fantastic. I will entertain a motion. Move to approve the limited-term contract as presented.
Second.
Mr. Pock with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion? I'd just like to say, I appreciate that. It sounds like this is not an entry level. Teacher's some experience coming along and the enthusiasm that she's going to be bringing into the building. It's going to be fantastic for us, so. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item D, Approval of Donations.
This evening, we have five donations, and I'm going to read them as follows. Pigly Weekly has donated one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents to the Germantown High School Athletics and Activities. Badger Land Striders Running Club, three hundred dollars to the GHS Boys Cross Country Team. Germantown Area Chamber of Commerce donated two hundred dollars to the Germantown High School Marching Band. Rockfields PTA donated for playground equipment valued at three thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. And Warhawk Band Boosters donated three thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars for transportation of the GHS marching band. We'd ask that you approve all donations this evening.
Then I'll take a motion.
Motion to thank the donors for their generosity and approve the donations as listed.
Second.
Sigamathan with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion?
Just, just for clarity, the Badger Land Striders was three hundred and fifty. I think it was stated as three hundred.
Three fifty.
Three fifty, just for clarity.
We appreciate the fifty extra.
Yes, we do.
Anything else? See and done? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. We are moving on to item six, Policy Committee. Mr. Barney, I believe you're going to have the comment.
Yes, Policy Committee met last week, Monday. We discussed two policies that are both coming forward with recommendations. So I'll move right to our next board item, six B. This policy is Policy twenty-five, twenty-one, the selection of instructional materials and equipment. And this policy is being revised to include the definition of instructional materials and instructional equipment to distinguish between the official curriculum provided to the students as opposed to teacher-created lessons, plans, content, and various forms of media. So committee brings forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the updates and modifications to District Policy twenty-five, twenty-one, selection of instructional materials and equipment with edits as discussed at committee.
I think that comes forward as a positive recommendation. We do not need a second. I would open it up for discussion if there is any.
If I could just add, there is also, not that they're board-approved, as they can change at any time. But we did include in the packet administrative guidelines that District Act and I worked on. And that's something we'll continue to add to as we move through curriculum revision process.
Now, I would like to add, so I'm, I serve on this committee, and there was some interesting material in here. And as far as continued food for thought, I think we may have missed an opportunity to provide a level of transparency within some of our supplemental materials that are mentioned in this policy for our community, the parents, students, for this board in general. I don't have language I would like to. I don't have language I would like to recommend in order to support that that effort of transparency right now. I would like to see that the committee potentially bring this back as kind of a furthering conversation around that. I know you're the committee chair of that.
Yeah, certainly. I guess what I would recommend is move it forward as it is tonight so that we have a policy in place. And then next time committee meets, which I would imagine will be later this quarter, we can revisit that and discuss your proposed language.
Sure. It would be great.
And due to me, the YOLO, the middle, end of February with the next round of spring policies, which we'll chunk out so we don't have sixty of them in one night, but this can be added to the list. And as I've shared at policy committee, I think this is one that YOLO will continue to revisit somewhat with some other policies as things evolve across multiple districts.
Sure. I think it's, the reason why I wouldn't provide language now for it, I think there's a, we need a better understanding of the cause and effect of what that potential language could bring, not only to the district administration, but our staff on a burdensome level. So we'll continue that conversation. I appreciate the openness for that. If nobody else has anything on that topic, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
All right. The next item, item C, approval of proposed policy twenty-one, thirty-three class size. You had an initial look at this at our board meeting in December. Committee took a second look at it last week and did not make any changes to the proposal. This is essentially the the district procedure that has been in place, but now it's being solidified in policy. Having in policy will allow the community, parents, and staff to understand our class size expectations as well as assist the administration and the board with finalizing staffing and budgetary items that we have to do every year. From a high level, I will go through the policy. At four K, the desired class size is twenty-one or less students. At K five through grade two, the desired class size is twenty-three students or less. Grades three through five, desired class size is twenty-five or less. And at grades six through twelve, across core academic, coordinated arts, and electives, the desired class size is twenty-seven or less. Band and choir will have varying class sizes based on coordination between the teaching staff and administration so that they can meet their objectives and expectations. And the policy also calls out special considerations that may be necessary. So with that, committee brings forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the new Germantown School District Policy twenty-one, thirty-three class size.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation. Any discussion? I just have one point on that. I've received a couple of questions in regards to this over the last couple of weeks and since the committee has met. I think it's important to note, we're not racing to these numbers. The goal isn't to be, to fill every class to this, but it is to set a structure, a known structure for the administration to move forward with and continue on planning. But that was probably the number one concern I heard, obviously, and we've heard it tonight, right? With class size. I don't think that's the intent. So I know we can read into this a little bit about, let's race to twenty or twenty-seven. I don't think that's the goal here in an honest fashion. So I just wanted to clarify some of that. If nobody else has anything, I would take a vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
That will pass.
Nothing else from committee?
Thank you. Item seven, finance committee. Mr. Loes.
Yes. The finance committee met earlier this afternoon at four thirty PM. The meeting was just about an hour long, so this is going to be what I call the Cliff's Notes version of that meeting. Ms. Wendy Unger with Baker Tilly presented the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three financial audit. There were no findings and really the audit was very good. We have a excellent business manager, so we were kind of expecting that. Next item is twenty-twenty-four mileage and meal reimbursement. This is full board item this evening, seven B. And the finance committee brings forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to approve the twenty-twenty-four mileage and meal reimbursement rates of sixty-seven cents per mile. Breakfast, twelve dollars and fifty cents. Lunch, seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Dinner, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation. Not needing a second, is there any discussion? See done? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Okay. Next item, we went over the vouchers. There were a few questions on vouchers and we approved those. Next item, we covered, Brittany covered her variance report. And the last item was a property tax review. So I got a few calls, why are my property taxes going up? I really can't do it justice here, but the finance committee meeting is recorded and you can see the whole meeting. This part of the twenty-twenty-four property tax review is towards the end of finance. So if you're really interested in that, skip to the end. One thing that has happened, it's not the only thing that has happened, but we have inflation. So taxes are calculated on inflated property values and taxes went up a little bit, not bad, but a little bit this year. And that's all I have.
I appreciate you bringing that discussion forward in that committee. I think the nuances in school board finance, Eric can probably attest to that, some of the conference training he just attended this week, the nuances are vast and important. So thank you for pushing that conversation through in your committee.
Yes, even I learned a few things or had a few things clarified for me this evening. So it's a good listen and listen carefully, you know, if you choose to do so.
Absolutely. That's it? Thank you. I will, item eight, teaching and learning committee. That was me. That was this evening. I'll kind of give you the Cliff Notes as well. That one went over forty-five minutes, almost an hour, I believe. Two topics, both just reports, no decision making needed, but hopefully some impending. So we're going to start with the academic and career planning updates. Obviously, last year, about this time, we heard on pathways and the continued work around that. I think we're building some structure to that in accordance with some state statutes as well as outside of the requirements, the intent and purpose is being given its due diligence to push forward a more robust program. So we learned about our educating for employment and our portal, our portrait of a grad. Both of those things will work, one as a guidance and second as a follow-through rating, less outward to the student and more internally for staff as far as we're setting goals and seeing if we're meeting those goals or what portions of the goals we're meeting or where we may to, may need to reemphasize or refocus. I won't go into the, all of the details on it. Please give that a lesson as it's a continuation from our pathways, discussion from this time last year.
Mr. Stewart, I'm sorry. I was fixing this projector. Did we approve from the finance committee, letter B, the new mileage reimbursement?
Yes, we did.
I apologize.
We took a look. Yep.
I was technical difficult.
Oh, just not for you then, I guess. Thank you for clarifying that. We then heard on the reading pilot update, the committee's worked extensively on this. We're in report number five, which is two more than I think we intended. We've kind of clarified why that is. The good news is this time around, the state has provided us, the three that we have been piloting do make their cut. We are waiting for one more data point, which is reimbursement or grant eligibility for those, and that'll be a portion of the decision. We found a, had a lot of data provided to us this evening. One being around the teacher evaluation portion of that process, not only from a, what they, what the evaluation was, but they took an in-depth look as to what, what they were evaluating in each category and did that make sense? Is that the totality of what we wanted to look at? We found a couple of things out through there. All the programs seem to be good or were probably in good hands with any one of them. Each one may have a shortfall here or there, but we found that that could potentially be a process. So Jake and his team were able to rework the data that was collected and kind of reverse engineer it as to what could we increase those scores or what was the potential cause of those scores? And it seems like they found some pretty specific and finite things. I think it's a good, it's a good opportunity to see in both directions what could potentially work and what couldn't and what we could do to improve those areas. So we'll continue to look at that. It was also a great way for the evaluators to provide upwards leadership and information and input into that. So we appreciate that. We found parental feedback as well, which is fantastic. Couple of the programs, one of them, I believe, was a little more, I won't call it forced, but communicative towards the parent or the household than the others. And we're thinking that may be why we found more participation because it was more forward-facing to those households than some of the others. So we'll continue to monitor that as well. We have MAP scores, which will receive that data that we can compare specific to kind of before and afters of participation in the pilot program. We'll have that coming. We are looking for, no decision tonight, unfortunately, on either of these as the reason stated before, but we are hoping in the next month, potentially to have that brought forward to finance for an expenditure decision and then ultimately the full board approval following that. So we appreciate all the hard work that continues to go into that. Without the, it does seem like the extended time that we've been allotted thanks to the state is a slow process of review. It has allowed us a little in-depth, further in-depth process. So I think we're in a good position as we move forward. And that is all I have on that. New business, item nine, a discussion and action twenty-four, twenty-five open enrollment seats, Dr. Reuter.
Thank you. This evening, after consulting with our now loose policy related to class size, consulting with the financial aspect, working with my assistant, Melissa Timmerman, we are proposing thirty-six open enrollment seats at the kindergarten level, not specified per building, as we look to monitor our enrollment numbers. That is a number higher than this board has ever been brought before. The rationale behind this, if we look at our projected enrollment, our current four K population, what we expect to come possibly from the private sector, our current staffing plan, and our capacity within buildings. We currently have eight sections of four K, or eight FTE, and at five K, we have fourteen. We have two teachers on limited term contracts due to additions the board approved in late August when we saw an enrollment spike. At this time, we would need to most likely, moving forward, even though we'll continue to monitor enrollment, either lay off current staff at the elementary level regarding the low four K going into five K and/or move teachers around, which is not the best staffing model to consistently move teachers from grade level to grade level as they start to master a grade level and they're moving elsewhere. So we have, we have looked at historical data over the last three years. In twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, we had a hundred and twenty-seven applicants for open enrollment in the district spanning five K through twelve. Only sixteen of those were for kindergarten. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a hundred and ninety-four applicants for open enrollment in the district. Only fourteen of those were for five K. And in this past year, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we had a hundred and forty-nine total applicants and only twelve of those were for kindergarten. Something my team does every Monday morning, we pull a data report from Skyward, enrollment data report for projected for next year so we can monitor four K and any new possible residents for the upcoming school year. Our kindergarten numbers projected for next year are staying steady as of this report at a hundred and forty-six, which is our roll-up from four K. We have not had any, to my knowledge, Mr. Mizak, you pull that data for me, five K new enrollees. So our idea to bring forward thirty-six seats is possibly two full sections, but they would be dispersed throughout the district as we see lower amount of kids coming into the district. This is part of birth rate recession. Every school district is seeing this at the early grade levels. And I know it's a larger number than the district's ever brought forward, but we think the recommendation is positive for stabilizing grade levels so we can build a consistent staffing plan to be consistent with our staff as well as from a budgetary standpoint, be consistent with knowing a projected average enrollment year after year versus a fluctuating enrollment. Additionally, Mrs. Callen and I have spoken, we would not be allowing any new open enrolled students in those thirty-six that currently, or that would have an IEP from early childhood or four K. And any student, we have the right under policy and state law that any student who open enrolls into the school district, regardless of the grade level that you approve a seat at, if they qualify for an IEP after that, they can be, we, in order to receive services, they'd have to go back to their home district because it's undue financial burden on the school district and they came in under a different pretense as a general ed student versus a specialized student. That would be an administrative decision based on resource allocation and current caseloads of our specialized staff.
I will open up this for undoubtedly a topic of conversation. Mr. Barney?
Of the current open enrollment students that we have, do we see a higher level of disciplinary issues with them compared to resident students?
I would have to dive into that, but our open enrollment numbers are so low historically. Like last year, we approved, I believe, I guess it was like less than ten seats total and they weren't even all picked up. Since I've been here, it's been less than ten. So comparison to the other thirty-nine hundred kids, I would say there's probably more disciplinary issues with the population of thirty-nine hundred than a handful. The last two years have been only a fifth grade open enrollment, which the argument to open enroll at kindergarten and only, not only to stabilize staffing and class size and number of sections in each building, we also get kids into our system very early on. So if there's any need for, to intervene around academic or social progress, it happens early on versus at older grade levels and they're put into the system. And now they may have been in a neighboring district for six, seven, eight, nine, ten years and to change that mental model or shift around academic and their whole child aspect is much more of a monumental task for our staff and a utilization of our resources versus early on where they become part of our district even though they don't live here.
Where I understand the reasoning for, obviously, if we're low on our enrollment for four K, five K, but again, the fear is if the district, the village, is planning on adding housing, I know they were doing a big housing to see what kind of housing we need, whether it's apartments, you know, next gen housing, and we all of a sudden now have a big influx of students where we aren't doing, you know, as we say, we have thirty-six seats available, but as they, you know, go through the school, you know, for a second now, suddenly we don't have room for them. Now we've, you know, it's, what are we doing justice to even those kids coming in that now there is no more room for them and they have to go find another school? So I guess, you know, if we can somehow work with the village and see what kind of, you know, residents were coming in so that we don't put students in a, in a bad spot.
I, this afternoon, reached out to village administrator, correct, is that we were all forwarded tonight's meeting that's coinciding with this meeting to attend, which obviously we can't be at both, regarding proposed housing in the village as that was somewhat news to me on. regarding proposed housing in the village as that was somewhat news to me on, based on previous conversations I've had with the village. So I'll get clarity on that. One of the pieces, and Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, DPI does allow us to add, come back in June to add seats because after the open enrollment window has closed, based on our current, our current student population or enrollment at that time. Is that correct? So we could, we could tonight, if the board chooses. It just might be difficult with our staffing plan and forecasting forward as middle school and high school students have selected classes for the fall over the last month. Now we start to cascade down from the number of FTE needed at middle and high school based on electives and core courses. And then that, our last piece of staffing is at the elementary level and we determine based on enrollment, but also the total number of FTE in the district that we'll bring forward to you in the next month or so for you approve, to approve contracts. It's going to possibly lead, as I said, to preliminary layoff notices to, it could be to a couple, couple of teachers in the district. But we do have that option that if you were to not approve any seats this evening or a minimized number of seats, we could come back in June and open it back up for more seats. But, but with the caveat that people who have already selected their school for open enrollment have been accepted, that pool might shrink. And that's why I wanted to share that historical data that we've had no more than sixteen kids apply over the last three years at five K.
I'd like to add a little context, I think, to that number. So prior to moving to the village, we were an open enrolled family. And we understood, and through that process, you picked three, locate three, three districts and three only, and you rank them one, two, and three. It was widely known within the circle of some of the city workers that I worked with that you do not waste one of those spots on Germantown. So as, if we were to open thirty-six spots in one grade, and obviously that message would get out that we're open, I would think those, those asked in really numbers would jump astronomically because I know I would have. I spent time with kids in two different school districts, Sussex and Germantown, and they both, or Sussex and Menominee Falls, and they both did a good job, but ultimately it wasn't the district we wanted to be with. We just knew it wasn't a good strategy as parents of open enrolled students to attempt to come here because of the low offer rate. And you mentioned in regards to a student coming in, we wouldn't be asking, or we wouldn't be allowing anyone of special education track. I would agree with our citizens' comment from earlier. I think a lot of those situations are probably found out down the road. And while legally, we're, we are probably of the right to ask them to go back to their originating district, ethically, would that be the, the best solution for the student at that time?
I know it's a common practice though.
Taking the, taking the, taking the financial side, and I'll get to the financial side of this here in a second. Ethically, I, I, where would that process lie? Is that with you as the administration, is the board providing you that, that authority? Or you would be asking us to make that decision?
That would be with administration. We look at current resource and then determine if it is feasible. It's a common practice in other school districts that you were not accepted under that term. It's going to cause undue stress on our, our resources, human resource and financial resources.
I, I would look at it in this light, and I don't know if I'm in, in minority on it, but we'd be asking them to come in in their enrollment while, I will call it, in the easy process of education would be a financial benefit to the district. But as soon as that financial benefit flips to a burdensome approach to the district and because it gets hard, we would then ask them to leave when they need it the most. That would be a difficult decision, I think, to make.
We currently have students who came in under open enrollment. Over the last fifteen years, that have qualified for special ed and have not been asked to go back to their home district.
The district's prac, current practice?
Previous administration's current practice.
So lastly, the financial side of this. If we're, if we're saying, two questions here. How is it that they're only at kindergarten that we have this lack? Or you're looking for utilizing that, utilizing that to push through over the years?
To stabilize building up because right now we have oddities in our number of sections based on enrollment where you might have a two-section track or a three-section track at a school in first grade and then second grade's four. So we're going to have internal movement again this year because we have these odd number of sections year after year. The goal is to stabilize.
I'm hearing you on that. Obviously, I think that stabilization would be more noticeable at the elementary levels. Right now we, versus once they're dumped into the middle school and then back into the high school. So we're, I would look at this more as that track of elementary that we're looking at, trying to stabilize, not the entirety of the system. Next year, if we project the same low enrollment, are we now not on a loop to continuously add open enrollment and add open enrollment? If this community doesn't come through with the housing and the family migration we're expecting or potentially hoping for? So I feel like we'd get ourselves into a looped track of continuing just to simply boost our numbers when our own population is telling us, we don't support this level of staffing. And while absolutely unfortunate, the tough decision on the staffing side would then have to be made, we wouldn't be trapped into that. And I've seen in other districts, I've had discussions with other boards around open enrollment and some of the runaway aspects are trained that they can kind of get themselves on because that money coming in is now needed to stabilize not only for staffing, but the entirety of the budget. The third part of the budget side of it would be, we would receive less dollar per head coming in through open enrollment than we went through a natural student, right? Natural enrollment student?
Say that, I'm sorry.
We would receive less, less, my understanding was the dollars the district, the home district would have to pay our district is less than what we would receive for our own in-district student.
The state rate is eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars per head.
So it'd be short of the eleven.
Correct.
So, so now we're not only in a loop of needing to continue to add those students to maintain, but we're doing it at a reduced rate and then we're taking our taxpayers' money to make up the loss in that eight thousand to the eleven thousand mark.
Correct. The thing, the other risk we run is we could be running class sizes though we are tonight, and I agree, to keep them within range of the policy, but also lower class sizes. We could risk running at, like this year, we have one section of four K at one of our elementaries. We could risk running class sizes like fifteen, fourteen, two sections of that versus, or one's changing the policy and running a very big class. So we have to weigh those factors too moving forward given our enrollment trends at the lower elementary. As more kids are graduating, bigger classes are graduating than are coming in.
So my question is related to the assumption of current and next year's enrollment projection. We're, we're simply assuming based on the numbers provided that, that we'll retain one hundred percent of the four K students, which I think is a reasonable assumption. And though I think we've done an excellent job of marketing four K, which by the way, four K enrollment is, is open and we have an open house coming up at the end of the month at all of our elementary schools. Do we foresee, or what was the thought process by assuming that there are zero four-year-olds not in our program coming into our district?
There's, there's not, we, we don't have a handle on how many are staying in private schools that offer four K, five K and on, as well as we're working to get the number of enrolled four K students in private, non-religious institutes. So like a daycare provider, because they don't have a choice next year. They can't go to five K in those providers. But we don't have that clean data because this, the village does not have. I've worked in districts where you get census data and you can project out from birth to four K within like eating to ninety percent accuracy. We don't have that here. So we're going on assumptions and our best cause is just roll-up data.
We're going on assumptions versus educated assumption.
Right, versus data-informed decision-making as we have many presentations this evening. I unders, I understand your, your objections to the proposal. I just, we're, we're looking at it administratively as stabilization, retaining quality people and making sure we're maximizing our space, but your thoughts are noted. And you, you, like I said, we, you could decide this evening to accept no open enrollment seats and then we reconvene around this topic in June. Once the open enrollment window closes, and Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, because you told that for me today. Once the open enrollment closes on June seventh, then we have not filled any seats because you didn't approve any. Then we could open seats if we see that Amy Bell's running a section of, you know, two sections of twelve kids or whatever it might be. Are we going to allow at least six seats there to up those class sizes? Because, or MacArthur, they're running twenty-five and, or twenty-four, they're maxing up the class size policy. That's the other thing is the distribution across the district. That's why tonight's recommendation was not for specific schools like it's done in the past because we don't have to determine schools until June. It was for grade level because then we can monitor enrollment per building and distribute accordingly to level the playing field with class size.
This is very much a hypothetical, so I understand your answer could be very vague. But obviously in the village, there's been more development in certain areas than others. And so if, if we run into the situation where we fill these seats and we get higher than expected, meaning we, our assumption here is met and exceeded, how do we handle situations in general where, I'm going to use MacArthur as an example, where we're full of MacArthur, but we have residents in MacArthur area? So we, if the assumption is, is those that are open enrolling in would be placed in MacArthur and we have this influx in the MacArthur school, then we, we get to shift?
We can put the open enrollment kids wherever we want. The resident students within their boundary, that's their homeschool unless, per policy, they reach out to me directly and then saying, I really like my child to go to X school, then I work with the principal, we look at class size and demographic, and we do and don't approve those, but those are few and far between. MacArthur would be probably the last school we distribute to because there is apartment complexes and we see, we, again, since I've been here, we monitor summer enrollment and we see an influx at MacArthur in August as that's the new time for leases to come forward. So right now, I believe, and Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy Bell, we have three sections of kindergarten and we are projecting two next year. Rockfield, we have three sections of kindergarten, we are projecting one. That is why we're most likely the distribution will go with possible sprinkling here and there at County Line and MacArthur.
What's the deadline for us to approve open enrollment seats for the current period?
By, by the conclusion of January.
Okay. So if we wanted to take no action tonight and try to get more information from the village, we'd have to reconvene before the end of the month to finalize it?
That's why I would recommend you don't approve, that we can reopen if need be versus approving if you're not, if that's not the will of the group. But I, I, my, my belief and our administrative team is that the number of seats we will be able to manage and distribute across the district this coming year.
I support this. It's different than what we've done in the past, but I think it's a somewhat bold idea. I believe what Chris is saying, it's a way of kind of stabilizing the school district. We're here to educate students and I think it's a good idea if we can start them early in our district. So why would we deny students in need, you might say, to start here in kindergarten? I think it's a good idea and we should go ahead with it. One question I have, is there any additional state aid that comes in besides what we get from the other school district? You know, that would be the result of the September head count.
I'm sorry. So when we do the head count, we see how many students are sitting in our seats that day for both September and January. We then subtract all the open enrolled students in and we add in all the open enrollment students out. So our funding is based on our resident students, not necessarily the ones that are sitting in our seats. So the other school then gets to count them because then they pay us. Does that make sense? So we will get the eleven thousand dollars for a student that open enrolls out to us, out from us, but then we will have to pay the other district the nine thousand-ish dollars. So we will keep two thousand dollars. Vice versa, if they're coming into our district, but that is not state aid. That's revenue limit. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Also, transportation is provided by the family. We don't transport. And additionally, there's truancy law related to open enrollment. If you are found truant, which is ten or more days of unexcused medical or family excused absences, you have, and we run a truancy meeting, which our principals do a very nice job of that. The student then, the following semester loses their open enrollment status and has to go back to their home district. And so every time, about this time of year, since its semester, Melissa reaches out to the principals, does an attendance count on our current open enroll to make sure they're complying with state statute? And if they're not, we pull in a truancy meeting and they lose their open enrollment status. So there's expectations related to attendance and once you're in, you're not just in.
If we follow through with that at an administrative level, I would assume yours would.
Yeah. Because they're, they're not here and we're responsible for them. So if they're not a resident, then we don't need to be responsible.
We did, you, you had mentioned internal district open enrollment, meaning contact you, your administration team for a family that would like to be in a different building. So if we have an Amy Bell and a Rockfield with diminishing enrollment, while they have, let's say diminishing enrollment, I would project the village is planning on housing developments to go into those areas. We've already seen buildings start. And one, the one thing Germantown does have is area for residential growth. They've mentioned they're done with the first round of, I won't call it the first round, but the planned side of adding jobs, building, manufacturing, that type of thing. And now they're going to focus on residential. So we have that coming, right? One way or the other, that's not tomorrow, that's a projected growth. But the village does have that. As we see towns like Menominee Falls and McQuillan fill their available land, districts such as Sussex Hamilton and Germantown have the available land and lot size is desirable by many. Going back to where that started, doesn't that offer us a pressure relief valve for some of our overpopulated or more populated elementary schools such as MAC and County Line internally? Couldn't we offer our internal, which would also then help maintain a staff level or normalize staffing, stabilize it at Rock and Amy Bell internally with, with, with our kids within this district?
Yeah. However, there's no transportation provided in that respect. So you're, you're saying if families can provide or have the means to provide their own transportation, then they, they can move inner district. But if we see enrollment, I always put, when I work with our principals, caveats around attendance. They have to be in good standing, attendance and following attendance policy, and provide their own transportation. And if there's a spike in enrollment that make the class size larger than expectations of this community and our staff, then you're moving back to your home district.
But within our district, given the vertical alignment we're building.
So if some, a MacArthur family says, I really want to go to Amy Bell because, and they have a sound rationale on that, because Russ is friends at the school, but we used to live in that neighborhood, now we've moved and it'll be their last year at Amy Bell, we want them to go to fifth grade.
But I'm saying proactively as a district. This isn't the families asking. This isn't the families asking. But we have open enrollment here internally within the district. We've heard complaints, I've heard complaints on this board, not only about student population size in those other two schools, but also the start time of one of them.
Sure.
We may have parents that could jump all over that, potentially. Obviously, if we're not bringing both kids or all of the kids across different grades, that's a different story. But I'm just saying, there's an internal option to apply an open enrollment, more so than there's an external. And if we would come across one of those situations where we would say, "Okay, the spike has occurred, we need you to return to your home school." We've now brought that vertical alignment from school to school, that that transition for that kid wouldn't be nearly as difficult, as well as we'd have the easier flexibility, because it's an internal district of open enrollment, I'll call it.
Internal district transfer.
Transfer.
That's the name of the policy.
Versus an external open enrollment in which we would have to find cause.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying and the logic behind it. I would just throw caution at that, that policy's written for special circumstance and not. That's why we have boundaries, right? And that could lead to then a high fluctuation, because I don't like the start time at a school, or I don't like the teacher at this grade level, which that's not the purpose of the policy. The purpose of the policy is for special circumstances. And the three that we've approved in two years, they've been unique circumstances, maybe split family, something like that.
But now it's advantageous of the district to do it, not the family. Or it co aligns habitagiously with both, right?
Sure. It does lose the concept of neighborhood-type schools in the village.
I understand that, but we're talking about a unique situation, and you're bringing a number that's never been heard in this district as far as open enrollment. So before, I would jump to that, without talking about it in totality, right? In every avenue, ability to address it. I would, given the unknown factors, I would not support bringing in 36 open enrollment students at a level, and I truly do believe we run into a risk until our residential takes off of having to do it the following year. And even if it's 20, and then 15, we're still on a wheel of reduced dollar amount with an unknown cost based on the kid that's coming. I couldn't support it. Anything else?
Understanding the concerns and hearing Dr. Reuter kind of explain some of the nuances with open enrollment, and what we can do if there are any sort of issues that pop up or other concerns that pop up. I'm going to vote for this. I think in the grand scheme of things, certainly, there could be some issues that pop up with this and other things. But in the grand scheme of things, with some of the information we shared that came from the village, I think that's really our bigger concern in the grand scheme of things over time. So I'm going to vote for this.
I just feel like more information before we just make a decision on something that we don't know. So as far as, like I said, what the village is going to do as far as, you know, adding apartments, whether it's next-gen housing, whether, you know, to see, kind of have an idea of what the expectation is, so that we're not, again, having to put a bunch of kids in open enrollment, and then all of a sudden, now there's not room for them, and they have to go find another school. I don't think that that necessarily helps kids. I think just information as far as how do our open enrollment students do? Are they, you know, successful academically? Are they successful, you know, are they disciplined? Just kind of having a little bit more information before we just make a decision on 36 kids.
I would just caution that the provisions under the statute are not, you cannot select based on criteria for open enrollment, it's random draw. So we can provide the academic performance. I don't know that I can go deep into the behavioral data with the board, because that now specifies our open enrollment students. But that could be discriminatory, that we're not accepting seats because they don't do well in school. I can argue that kids who are open enrolled, now we can get the data, might exceed our expectations or even the expectations of the peers that live in the residence, because they're working for something that's an opportunity that wasn't there previously from a home school.
Do we have a number of kids that open enroll out in Germantown?
Brittany, would you mind answering that, number out?
Currently, there is open enrolled out, regular ed, 142, and special ed, open enrolled out, is 23.
It was hard to hear.
I'm sorry. Open enrolled out, regular ed, because there's two different categories. Regular ed is 142. Open enrolled out, special ed, 23. I have in numbers as well.
Can you give them, do you have a whole open, do you know the number in?
Sorry?
Number of open enrolled in?
Regular ed, open enrolled in, 70. And special ed, open enrolled in, 9.
So we have 79 current students that are open enrolled in, and we lost 165 out during the course of their, that can range in multiple grades.
So then, does that balance out as far as the, if you have about the same number that are going out as coming in as open enrollment? It kind of balances out that $3,000. That is, you know, we get $11,000, right? And then only $8,500 comes in from students, is that correct? You guys were talking about before.
So currently, in the budget, we have for revenue, $733,000 coming in, and we have $1.5 million going out, a little more than $1.5 million going out.
Tom? I don't know how the vote's going to go, but if we approve zero seats, does that mean next month you're coming to us with non-renewal notices for a lower staffing plan?
We have, we are waiting for the final draw from middle school and high school registration, because again, that determines our FTE at the elementary. It sounds goofy, but it does. Based on the number of total FTE we need for what the courses our kids select, both core and elective courses. Then that tears down to, now what's our enrollment projections, which was shared this evening, at each grade level? And then we break that down by school, and we look at what's our current staffing plan? Who's retiring? Is that still, Mike, when is the retirement deadline?
February 15.
So that would play into, we can't make decisions until after that, because we need to know who's retiring, because that all has ramifications to what our non-renewal process would be, which is March?
May.
May, I'm sorry, May.
Yeah, May 15th is final notice.
Which enrollment could go up, but it could stay exactly the same at kindergarten through 12th grade, or not deviate much. 4K is the one that, we had high enrollment in the summer. We've had open house at every elementary for 4K, and we've had, we've publicized both kindergarten and 4K registration. But until things are in target and says, "Go back to school," some parents don't act, they go, "That's right, I gotta enroll my kindergarten," or who might have been at Momentum. And they don't even have a mental model around school and the timeline.
So I got a couple of questions. Knowing some of the alternative care, private companies around here have held a non-enrollment if you were looking for half-day to counteract when we open 4K, which, and I'll call that predatory, right? A disservice to the community. But I understand why they're doing it, they have a business and they're running it. So I'm not going to get into that side of it. But we have a data set there that we don't know how many that is that will be here for a full-day 5K that have been beholden to that, because they didn't have a choice, they needed full daycare for their child. So I don't, I think we're missing a number there.
And that's where if you approve zero seats tonight, we could have a clearer picture with that coming forward.
So then, for this year, I understand this is a move for projection forward, but for this year, for this coming year, how does enrolling 36 students at 5K across what is most likely two schools and a couple maybe here or there, affect somebody in the middle school as far as the staffing plan?
Well, it adds two sections to the elementary where we already know we're lacking kindergarten, which stabilizes the middle school.
But this year, you're telling me you would recommend a non-renewal of someone in middle school, because we didn't fill a track or two in K5?
I don't know that in middle school, we have to look at licensure. So we've moved people before, from second grade to seventh grade, because they have a 1-9 license, is that ideal? No. But we...
But how does second grade and seventh grade play into a decision we're making on K5 this year? I'm not saying it doesn't down the road, because obviously that rotates through and builds class size as it moves forward. I understand what I'm talking about, as far as the staffing plan, how does that come about for the decision-making process?
If we're able to fulfill all 36 seats, that's two sections. There's possible retirement at the elementary level, where have a couple, and possibly a couple more. And then with the belief that there's going to be increased enrollment, that would at least alleviate such a high number as jump from eight to 14 when it comes to staffing. A reduction from 14 down to eight.
Dr. Reuter made reference to the potential overlap between elementary and middle. Of the three levels, that's definitely true. Elementary and middle would have the most overlap. So if there's a shortage at the elementary level, and there's an excess at KMS, it might mean reduction at KMS, or vice versa. It might mean movement of teachers.
But if we're recommending 36 at 5K, we're not saying we're a shortage at the middle school. We're saying we're a shortage at 5K specifically.
It was an if. Right.
But what we're being asked to do right now, and I'll cut to it, is there staff we want to retain based off of, and the way to do that is increase enrollment through open enrollment? Or are we financially going to listen to what our enrollment data says for our students and our taxpayers, our tax base? It's not a good decision either way, I understand that. But for this year, how does that? It doesn't, to me, it doesn't. It maintains three tracks in the 5K, one of which we added last year because of an increased class size, right?
At Rockfield, yep, and the others in MacArthur.
So we added, we made the adjustment to bring in staffing when we needed it. Why wouldn't we look at reducing staffing when our citizens, our community are telling us we don't? And I understand the finite, and I understand staff's going to take that as, "They're trying to get rid of us," that is not the case. This is an honest conversation around this, while also then putting an unknown jeopardy of 36 students in our hands from outside of this community. And you're telling us, if they come up with an IP, cut them. So financially, it's okay now?
I'm not telling you we're going to do that, I'm telling you that's an option. It is.
Yeah. But what if 36 students? We know the dollar amount, one to one, from a student of special needs to a standard student, however we want to use the political term for that, is drastically more.
Brittany spoke to it tonight, with 33% reimbursement of a student with an IP, right? You spoke to that tonight, finance that. It costs more with a student with an IP, we know that. That's, but it's our obligation to service our resident students with IP.
100% agree. But we're saying if we bring them in, we cut them if it became too expensive. If it wasn't financially in our favor to keep them. That's a game I'm not running. Mr. Brittany?
Overall, I support adding some at kindergarten, just to give us the opportunity to balance class sizes across our elementary schools. I don't know that 36 is the right number. I guess I, if you can share, if there is any insight as to how you arrived at 36?
It's two sections of 18, but it would be distributed. And it wouldn't be like we had two classes of just open enrolled kids. But in schools where we know our kindergarten numbers are down, we could distribute those kids with the current resident kids. It could have gone higher.
I understand.
Based on our current model for staffing, if we wanted to maintain the same.
Yeah, I have to think...
I know this is something this board, historical board members, even community residents, this hasn't ever been brought forward, because, one, we never had a class size policy until tonight, and, two, the previous formula that was being used by administration didn't make sense. I'll be on the record to say that. We were looking at the average class size of 15. So that's why there was never, there was never more than one or two or three or four kids brought forward, and always at 5th grade, which still didn't make sense, because the schools that they were at were tipping as close to be needing three sections. So this is something that I was aware of in other districts I've worked in, that we work to maintain stability, and this is a method, so that's why I brought it forward. This is me. And I understand the concerns related to why, the caution towards it.
Brittany just gave us the numbers, and we've got more open enrollments out, almost double of open enrollments in. So this is a, we should at least be able to even that number. And 36 students doesn't even get us to even. So I don't think there's an issue with going with the number 36. As far as the district being overrun down the road, the village could approve 100 building permits before the end of the week, and we're not going to see any students from that for years. We've been down this road before. We thought maybe as a result of the referendum, we would be overrun, you know, by new building and new building permits for homes. And to some extent, building permits have increased because of the referendum. Look at our tech ed classes, we may have the best tech ed facilities in the state right here. So what's happened is enrollment may have not dropped as fast as it otherwise would have, but we weren't overrun with new enrollments just because we did a referendum. So we're here to educate students. I think we should show that we're here to educate students and take the 36. You know, who knows in that group of students who we would be denying if we don't take them? And Chris, or Dr. Reuter, I should say, just said we could have gone higher. So to me, it seems like a 30, the 36 is a number that's safe. And if you don't do that as this small K5 class, let's say we approve zero. The K5 class will be small next year. That wave goes through the school district for the next 12 grades, or 11 grades, depending on how you look at it. So just because it's new doesn't mean we shouldn't try it. I think we can try it and reevaluate one year from today. You know, we'll see how it goes.
But the revaluation tool on that is not removing the 36 kids without cause?
No, no, we wouldn't do that.
So there's no, you can't reevaluate it?
We would reevaluate if we accept open enrollments, 36 more the following year.
If the district's year over year accepting 36 enrollment seats, we're financially doing a disservice to our taxpayers?
Not necessarily. There's a couple of ways of looking at it. One thing that's happened over the years is, it's been a while, so I can't give you the exact number, and I'm not going to put Brittany on the spot to give it to us. But occasionally, we would get an email where the taxpayer says, "I'm saving the district money by sending my student to private school." And my response was, "Well, actually, I support your right to send your students to private school. However, you're actually costing us more in state aid than your taxes are, that are coming to the school district. So it costs us money for every student that's enrolled in a private school." And I'm fine with that. You know, if parents want to send their students to private... And I'm, I'm fine with that. You know, if parents want to send their students to private school, that's fine. We need to compete with those. Private schools and show that we're better. And I think. Accepting open enrollments, especially when we have an unbalance. I think the number, uh, you're testing my short-term memory here, but I think it was seventy four in and a hundred and forty something out. Uh, I didn't write the numbers down, so I'm sorry.
Seventy nine in, one sixty five out.
Oh, okay. So it is actually about a two to one ratio. I don't know what we're worried about.
And if the, if the thirty six seems ballooned, I, you know, I I pulled, and Mr. Ewert, I understand your, your firsthand experience with. Don't waste a seat, right? If you, they're not going to accept. But we've had over the last three years on average thirteen to fifteen kids apply for kindergarten. So if it is a reduction to one section of eighteen kids and we look at that distribution across the district. That might be a start to this methodology and idea versus thirty six, which I understand is is a lot compared to a handful of previous years.
Yeah, I just don't see how we get off the hamster wheel if we go down this path. If we artificially inflate our enrollment numbers to maintain staffing, we will continue to have to do that.
Are we assuming that enrollment's going to keep declining or come back up and win?
Keep declining.
Keep declining.
I mean, uh, so I just want to give some information. We continue, as you are aware, have, um, graduating classes in twelfth grade that are much larger than our. Kindergarteners coming in. So we're in the three hundredth range for graduating classes and we're in the two hundredth number of kids coming into kindergarten and four K. I'm bringing them into four K earlier is great, but our numbers are a lot lower as the years are going on in larger graduating classes. I understand the housing, that could happen. Um, it's not, I don't believe going to happen. Once it gets approved, I think it's going to take a little while, as Mr. Loth stated. If we approve thirty six, the average is fifteen that have applied. So we could, is it fifteen aroundish for the last three years?
Twelve, fourteen, and sixteen. So thirteen point seven five.
So, and I understand the hamster wheel continually, but we haven't had open enrollment in the past and we continue to lose kids on open enrolling out. So I would recommend if we want to go thirty six, that we start doing something. Because what we were doing had zero data behind it. They literally were just pulling numbers and approving them. There was no information behind why it was the numbers or the grades that they chose. So I think this is a good start. And if it's not thirty six, I think it should be something. Um, we're doing kindergarten because of the reasons he stated. It's starting from the bottom. Are there spaces in other places of the school district? Yeah, there are. But starting at kindergarten, I think is a good place to start a student often into a district.
So when, when we're talking about kids leaving the district and we have to pay that cost, kids coming into the district, that's what we refer to as shared cost, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, that figures into the equalization aid formula.
Well, that's a different shared cost, but yes.
Are we negative or positive right now?
We're negatively aided.
So if we're, if we're negative.
In tertiary aid. There's three levels of aid, correct? Tertiary aid. If you're in tertiary aid, you're negatively aided. We are. We're, um, reducing that each year as we restructure our debt. Which is another factor into the equalization aid calculation. So each year we are getting less and less negatively aided.
I was gonna say, we'll, we'll see a decrease in state aid.
Correct.
Okay. You, you spoke earlier about the enrollment exemption.
Declining enrollment exemption would have nothing to do with open enrollment.
No, but.
Oh, sorry.
Wouldn't we qualify for it?
We would qualify for a declining enrollment exemption if our three-year average of the September count. Is less than the three-year average of the prior year September count, not including anything to do with open enrollment. Open enrollment students are taken in and out. So during our count, so what you're looking at, the open enrolled students that leave us are taken into consideration to your count. The open enrolled students that are coming into us are part of that district's count, not ours.
Okay. We, we keep, we, we talk about Germantown, uh, the growth of Germantown. We represent several villages here and there's a lot of growth going in in Jackson also. So I mean, if we're going to follow up with Germantown, we should probably follow up with Jackson, take a look at the growth rates there.
You know, in regards to the next gen housing that, uh, the village is discussing this tonight. Uh, there's two municipalities that have backed away from it. Jackson is not one of them. Jackson has jumped in with both feet. And they are the first to actually build and launch the housing, housing. I'm calling market, but they're, they're actually on the process of building these houses as we speak.
I'm not sure if those are in our district though, are they?
That development. No, but they have vacant land that is.
Right.
And I know the village is, the county's lead discussion is. This evening pointing out ten different site locations within Germantown for this same type of housing. Not one location, ten different potential locations. The distinction being Jackson owned their land, um, so they could provide it to that project at a reduced cost. The county would be asking Germantown to procure the land and then provide it at a reduced cost. Won't get into the village politics side of it. I find that to be a little bit of a stretch of ever occurring, given the financial restraints they're under right now. But that's the discussion that's happening and building down the block.
Now, the more I think about this, sure, I'd like to have housing data and new construction data. But I don't know that that has a huge impact on kindergarten because someone could buy a house that has a third and a seventh grader.
Correct.
You know, that doesn't affect what we're talking about tonight.
Correct.
It, it does because those seats are being filled in kindergarten. The housing's going to take place over years. You don't want that mass moving through the system as people move in and, to your point with older kids, and often we go, we don't have room for our own citizens.
Fifth and sixth graders come in as this thirty six hit fifth or sixth grade and now we're overpopulated and we're going to expand staffing at that, not.
I'm not sure I can say whether you're for, or me personally can say whether I'm for or against it based on that, but from a risk mitigation standpoint. Doing something about it now that you can't clawback or if you do clawback, it looks pretty messy and the optics on that are not good. Or waiting another year, what's the cost break even or analysis on that?
This would be our first year going from the, the, I will call it, um. I think we have untrue numbers at our four K program. So, uh, we'll see what that actually transfers over to five K this year. And I'm not saying do zero. Historically, we, we don't do zero. We do something. To your point and to Chris's point in the administration, that's changed. We make those decisions based off of data which were not occurring before. So we're not ignoring that side of it. Any continued discussion?
I would ask that regardless of the motion this evening, we make sure that the motion states, um, that the current students who are open enrolled as well as tuition waiver remain here. Um, and don't lose sight of that so that when the.
What's the, it's been, what's the average number of applicants that we've had?
Overall.
The, the ones that have asked that have been tonight.
So Melissa, this includes people who applied for four K last year. We don't even have four K seats. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two is a hundred twenty seven total.
No, no, applicants for open enrollment, or the historical data that you brought.
For five K or total?
Five K.
Five K, twenty twenty one, twenty two is sixteen. Twenty two, twenty three is fourteen, and twenty three, twenty four is twelve. Knowing we didn't have seats, they still applied.
So I, originally I wondered if we could even fill thirty six kindergarten seats. I don't know that we can based on what we just heard. So I think we should go ahead and approve them.
You'll fill thirty six seats.
And we'll see what happens. I, I don't, I don't know that we will.
A hundred percent confidence. As a parent that went through it, I know the network of parents that, the, the conversation that occurs. You'll fill thirty six seats. And if it's thirty four, I'm sorry.
I, I. I think we can handle them. I think.
Uh, the reason why I asked for those numbers is those are the ones that have applied even knowing we didn't have seats, want to be here. They wanted to be here so bad that they applied even knowing we didn't have seats.
Remember Brittany stated the graduating classes are all bigger than the kindergarten classes coming in. And this isn't my area of expert expertise, but I believe that statewide enrollments are down. Every school district in the state is down. So obviously there could be an exception here or there, so.
Public school enrollment.
Yeah.
Students are advocating to. Private school.
Right. Sixty percent of Wisconsin districts.
And, and if that's the case, then the community's saying we're looking for alternative options to what you're offering, not continue to staff. I, I don't like the decision either direction it goes because it, there's a hard staffing decision that would result from this. I understand that. Well, but, but ultimately, our tax base is what it is and, and the children, our potential student base that lives in it is what it is. We can swim upstream and say, we'll just float it for this year and float it for this year. And that becomes a revolving door. I'm not saying that occurs. They can be very well right and the housing goes and it worked. I just don't see it, the balancing act that it takes. We're trying to, you know, thread a needle at that point. With a very expensive, uh, ramification if, if it doesn't go well.
But remember, we've got double the students going out that we have open enrolled coming in. So this is. I don't know how much of a problem that really is, but I think, uh, we can start to correct that this evening.
Well, another way to look at it is based off projections, first grade is projected, uh, for twenty four, twenty five, two forty six. We're projecting five K, one forty six. If we don't address this, that, obviously making a big assumption that these numbers don't increase, decrease, but. This staffing issue will carry forward several years potentially.
Correct.
So that's the other consideration in this is, is, do we rightsize the staffing?
Correct. I hundred percent agree.
I think there's been other approaches from this board. I, I'll cite two arguments I've heard from this board. Uh, one in regards to the village and housing and the type of housing they're building. And that they shouldn't build certain types of housing because we don't have the room in our schools for it. I've heard that argument. I've also heard the board attempt to approach a, a different strategy to enact some and open enrollment. And many districts around us did through an online academy. I, I was involved in that at one point. And saw kind of the inner workings and strategy behind it. Unfortunately, the administration in place at the time, uh, did not have the skills to pull it off. There was some want within the district. Some of the people in this room have worked really hard on that project. And that was a legitimate attempt that could negligate, or could, um.
Negate.
Negate, sorry, the word I'm looking for. Uh, some of the risks that we are trying to manage while bringing in students. Without having to worry about overrun class sizes and, uh, staffing issues. Uh, that, that was a legitimate attempt. I think there was some within the administration, uh, that are no longer here. One, uh, at the helm that probably had no understanding or very little understanding as to the workings of it. So they couldn't educate. Didn't educate the board properly on, 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 on the ins and outs of how that would function. Uh, and another that wanted to, uh, turn that project into something beyond, uh, a financial asset for the district. Now we have districts around us that took advantage of those programs, opening, opening, and that's where some of these open enrollment students go. Is these online academies. And it might be the right learning system for them. But the, those districts are profiting while spending low dollar amounts. They are spending close to eight grand on each one of those kids. To have them open enroll. So they're plus money. The downside is, isn't, isn't there. This board has done some work in this area. It's not an easy decision. Um. Any other discussion? Well.
I do just want to say quickly, when I started here three years ago, I looked into open enrollment, an open enrollment out, and I also, I looked at it in my other districts. There's, when families move into a school district, they usually obviously move in because of the community and, and what they like about the area that lives in. If their children have already established friends at their past school district, you'll see that that's why a lot of people open and roll out. So they could move into the developments that are here and they could continue to open and roll out to their original school.
And we have, I know of situations that we have in our school where people move out of the community but kept their students enrolled in our district.
Correct. As long as we accept the open enrolled in.
So I mean that, I'm just saying it works both, both directions.
Correct. That we just have more going out. So they would say that more are living here because it's a great community, but keeping their children's relationships.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think we have three options on the table for you to decide tonight. Either. Make a motion to vote on the recommendation, make a motion to vote on a reduced number. Or make a motion to vote on no seats and revisit, um, in June.
After June.
After June seventh, um, after we, the open enrollment window closes. To determine if we're going to reopen our open enrollment window for those who apply at whatever grade level we so choose, specifically kindergarten.
I think we do need to address obviously the, you know, the, the lower enrollment. Obviously, we need to keep our student count at a relatively consistent level. But, yeah, we kind of talked earlier, is this going to be a trend where every year we're adding thirty six more students? We're trying to, but if, if enrollment is going down across the board, across the state. Some point, there is going to be a reduction in, in enrollment anyway. So what, at what point, how, how long do we keep this? This going as far as adding open enrollment students? That we want to try and keep it at, you know, two hundred and forty students a class? Or at some point are we going to have to accept the fact that just enrollment is going to be less because there's less kids in the state? So when do we kind of, do we do this now where we, instead of doing thirty six, we do eighteen or twenty, just add one class? And then to kind of see where we go instead of, you know, at some point, we're going to have to address the fact there's just, just less kids. So I would be comfortable obviously adding, you know, we could talk about just doing one class of kids.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve fifteen new open enrollment seats at five K for the twenty four, twenty five school a year. In addition for applicants, existing students already attending Germantown schools that have moved to approve the zero special edu. And move to approve the zero special education seats for the twenty four, twenty five school a year.
Second.
Okay, so.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we've got fifteen here.
Fifteen is the most.
Fif- fifteen, you said. Um. Will we still have an opportunity to reevaluate in June?
Yes.
Okay. We always reserve, we always reserve that, right?
Yep. So this allows for, if, if it moves toward a, a majority vote, it'll allow fifteen seats at kindergarten in the district. That could mean five kids at each school, or, sorry, that's terrible math. Um, but it could be distributed across five schools. So it could be, you know, four kids, five kids, at each, or four kids at each school.
Given the track size, I would assume we'd be focused on two schools.
Correct. Correct. And then, and then.
If not one, given the number we approve.
Yep, it's not going to be one section. But then, Michael, to your question. But then, Michael, to your question, we'll come back with staff, where we're at from enrollment report in the June board meeting, and we can open up the recommendation, open whether fifteen seats or what, ten seats, whatever it might be.
Sure, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, that passes. Okay, that was item A. Nine B, discussion and action, twenty-four, twenty-six administrator contracts, Dr. Reuter.
Yeah, define my sheet, sorry. I'm recommending this evening the outlined administrators for, to enter the district, I'm sorry, the board to enter into contracts for the two-year contracts as the maximum allotment per state statute for the twenty-four through twenty-six school year at their, no less than their current twenty-three, twenty-four salaries. There's in the catch, a contract that's been reviewed by Eagle, any necessary changes. The first reading took place with the board previously. And there's one administrator missing, it's Mr. Rooney. I get shared tonight, I won't just state his name. He started this year. He's the only administrator not on a two, the current cycle. Everyone else is up for this year. So rather than issuing him a one-year contract extension, next year, I'll bring him forward for a new two-year contract as well. He agreed to that. He's doing a great job, there's nothing wrong with him. But he's the only one not on the same cycle, and to keep everyone else on the same cycle.
I understand he was approached to see what she would be more comfortable with.
Yes, he gave me the thumbs up. I said, "Here, now isn't your job, you're doing a great job."
Yeah. Please, nobody read into that.
Correct.
Any discussion? About a motion? I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the administrative contracts for Germantown School District administrators presented for the twenty-four, twenty-six school years, with salary increases to be determined after July first, twenty twenty-four, and an overall percentage amount determined by the board and individual administrator amounts determined by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second, any discussion? Mr. Loth?
I'd just like to add that all the administrators' salaries are public record, and they are published here in, you know, this particular packet, just like the teachers' salaries were published at our last board meeting. That's it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, that passes. Nine C, discussion and action approved, DECA overnight travel request, Mr. Reuter.
Yes, the State DECA Competition, Distributive Education Clubs of America, also known as the Association of Marketing Students, will be competing February twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth in Lake Geneva. Twenty students and two advisors will be going on the trip. Students will be paying for the registration and lodging and transportation costs, which is outlined here, along with all their advisor expenses. Will be covered by the Germantown School District using the GHS Athletics and Activities Budget. We're looking for approval of overnight travel this evening.
Take a motion?
Move to approve the overnight travel request for twenty students and two advisors to travel to Lake Geneva from February twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, to attend the DECA state competition as presented.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second, any discussion? I have one question. On the applicant form, date submitted to building principal, date submitted to superintendent's office, those are blank. Are they just not on this copy, or?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
For the dates submitted to building principal and dates submitted to superintendent's office, those dates are blank on the overnight field trip request form.
Oh, I'm, that was submitted, this was submitted last week, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, correct, it's blank. It was one of the things, it was one of those where it popped up. We have kids qualified, rushed to get it into the board packet and agenda. So I believe it was Wednesday of last week, the eleventh hour.
I think we can mark it as an incomplete, but...
Yep, we'll take some points off, but...
Beyond that, I just noticed that those were empty. These forms, sometimes we get them handwritten, sometimes we see them typed out. I appreciate it's typed out, because I can actually legibly read everything that's on here.
Yeah.
Other than the two missing dates, which are generally irrelevant, other than planning. Mr. Loth?
Yes, I wish to commend Dr. Reuter for defining DECA. I was trying to come up with some text or some words for that. It would have been, I'll let it go. But I love these type of events. They'll be for the students that participate. They will learn a lot on this trip, I guarantee it. These are great events, and I'm happy to see that we've got students participating.
And in Mr. Barney, consistently, as a group, I, every six months, it seems like we're approving a DECA thing, so...
Yeah, I would echo Volso's statement, it's fantastic.
I believe, when I was in high school, I participated in this, but it wasn't called, I don't think it was called DECA, then I don't remember the...
Might have changed over the years.
Acronym, yeah, it was just a, you know, a couple of years ago.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Ten, closed session. I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty point eight-five, so one succeed to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of an employee. A, district administrator contract, B, personnel matters.
So moved.
I'll second that. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second, all in favor?
Roca.
Sorry, Roca.
Ewert?
Here.
Myself, yes, assuming it's a yes.
Yes, I agree, yes.
Loth?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
It's my understanding we intend to exit out of closed into open.
We'll reconvene here for action as needed.
Post discussion here if it's needed. So stick around if you'd like, otherwise, thank you for coming. Please drive safe. We are in closed at nine eighteen. Germantown School District Board of Education is entering back into open session at ten sixteen PM. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the administrator contract for Christopher Reuter for the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six school years.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Barney, I have a second from Ms. Higginbotham. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will take a second motion.
Motion to approve the resignation of Thomas Kuava, effective January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes, or any ayes? Seeing none, that passes. I will take one final motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Loth with the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at ten seventeen PM.